Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. John, do you know if there's anybody on the line for public input?
We do have one person with sand companies that is attending on behalf of the vacation of city property request.
Okay, but not-
Jamie Thielen.
Not for public input?
Not for public input, no.
All right. Review and approve council agenda.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items: Item A, approved nine fourteen twenty twenty council meeting minutes; Item B, approved two AM liquor license renewal for ultimate sports bar and grill; Item C, approved resolution accepting donation to city; Item D, approved election judge list for twenty twenty general election; Item E, approved election judge and head judge pay increases; Item F, approved change order number one, Second Street North; Item G, approved minimum maintenance alley; Item H, approved no turn LED arrows, Tenth Avenue and Division; And item I, approved purchased Celebrite or Celebrite data recovery system.
I'd like to pull F, H, and I.
Anybody else?
I'll move to approve A, B, C, D, E, G.
Second. Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Item F, Mike.
I had some questions and I did speak to Keith a little bit about this. In that quote we got, there was a six thousand dollar, sixty-five hundred dollar project for, let me look real quick. I believe it's sixty-five hundred, six thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents for repair on a water main. That should be taken out of this and that should come out of our general maintenance fund for the city because that was not part of the road construction, I believe, from the explanation we have here. Which would leave-
Is there a lot of difference if we just pay for it through a change order, or?
Well, it's not, it shouldn't be on the change order because it's not part of the project. It should come out of our general maintenance fund because it was a maintenance issue, not a street project issue.
It is, yeah. It was part, it wasn't directly be part of the project, but it happened because of the project. So, the reason it, it was in the change order, we'll make a general entry back out, so.
Yeah.
It's, so that way we got the better pricing versus-
If they just-
So, yeah, we can, we can do that, Mike.
We pay the bill and they-
The money can come, the money can come out any funds.
Right, yeah.
It comes, but it comes from a different part of the-
Correct.
Fund, so that the funds are correct.
Right, it'll come out of the enterprise fund versus-
All right, H?
H, I don't know, do we really need to put those indicators in on Tenth Avenue? I don't believe that was a budgeted amount for the year. We've been trying to keep in line with our budgeting for the year. And that's a thirteen, almost a fourteen thousand dollar expense. Do we have room in the budget for anything like that, or?
To answer your question, Mike, yes, we do.
No, we don't. I don't think it was a budgeted item.
We need to add them in, we need to install the arrows.
My, my question is, do we need them? And I'm going to ask chief, do we have problems down there when there's trains on Division Street, well, by El Laurel Restaurant, China Star Restaurant? Do we have, do we have problems down there with that intersection being blocked when there's a train there and people want to go either north, east, north or south, if they're going east and west and they want to turn either right or left, or if they're coming from the north and they want to go across? Do we get people backed up in that intersection or accidents in there?
It does get backed up, but I can't say we've had a lot of crashes and I can't say I get a lot of complaints at all really about it. It does create a backup periodically, but it doesn't seem to be an issue.
Those signs are going to sit right on the corners?
They're gonna, no, they'll-
How far back from the intersection are they gonna sit?
No, they're gonna, they're gonna be mounted on the mast of the semaphores, right next to the, to the lights themselves, so.
Just like on Highway ten.
Yep, we have one out on Twenty-Eighth Avenue South, excuse me. So, this was brought up by, by a council member about a year ago, a little over maybe even, and it was my fault that I didn't bring it back forward soon enough, so I'm just honoring that request and bringing it to the council for your discussion. And yes, it's not a budgeted item, this would come out of the reserves to pay for this, so. And it's for you guys to debate tonight.
Yeah, and I gotta, and I gotta agree, when I saw it, I thought, I just, I wanted, I wanted to know how many times we've had accidents down there, how many times has it been backed up, and it doesn't seem like there's a, there's a real problem there, and I, I would think people would learn that, I don't know, thirteen thousand, I, I don't know, I, I don't know if it's going to help even.
Well, if your fire chief would be here, that's the issue.
Well, how is that going to affect the fire-
What would it affect him?
Because when they are in front of China Star and they want to make a right to go to the apartment buildings, they round that corner and there's a train. Then all the firefighters get out of the truck, back the traffic up, then they all get back in the truck and then go over to VIDOC.
And how many times does that happen?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would say not very many, if any. Anyway, what's your-
If the traffic is backed up, it's, it's, you know, until the, it's just like any other traffic light, you know, and an emergency vehicle comes and the traffic is backed, you gotta bide your time to get through it, I mean, that, it's a bad thing to do as, as an emergency responder, but what do you do with traffic that's filled up on three lanes? I mean, you know, you can't-
They back the cars up onto Division, so they can back out.
Yeah.
Well, my, my point was, if you've already got, if you've got lights up here, but you've already got the traffic backed up, what's good as the lights doing until you're up here in the, in the intersection?
Right.
If it's a block back, where it says, you know, don't want to go any farther forward, but you're already blocked in, it's too late to see the light.
The, the light tells you not to turn. So, you don't turn it, you go straight through.
Common sense also tells you not to turn when the frickin' lane is full of cars already. But, that's people driving and they're going to turn left, even if that light is there, to try to fill that up. I mean, I, I've seen it happen, it's in South Rapids that way, I mean.
All right, what's your, well, okay.
I, I would, well, let's see, we can-
Go ahead, let's get rid of this one.
Okay, I move not, I'm, I, I would move not to take the quote and not to install them at this time.
For a second.
But, you're moving to not take-
To not, to not install them.
Not to install them.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pet posed?
Yep.
Three to one. All right, we're not going to do that. Item I, approved purchase.
This, Dave, what is the ninety-three hundred, is that just for the one item? This is for that?
I think it takes the, the numbers off of, security codes off of cell phones or whatever.
Yeah.
It, it's basically, it's a, it's a kit with different attachments, USB plug-ins and things like that, to recover data off of devices, phones and iPads and things like that. It's, it's becoming much more common for us in various crime types that we investigate, to have to try to recover data. And we've been driving downtown a lot to do this and it just seemed like the time was right for us to, to have equipment of our own because we use it so frequently in, in our case investigations.
Is this a piece of equipment that would be used on a weekly, every other day, monthly basis, or?
If not daily, weekly for sure. We're, we're constantly trying to recover data from phones, whether there are sex trafficking cases, other assaults, financial crime, things like that.
Can you recover phone, uh, data from an iPhone?
Uh, that is a little more challenging, but I guess that does require more, more effort.
All right, is this something that was in the budget, or?
Well-
Is it something that can be taken away from?
It would have been in the twenty twenty-one budget, but what happened is because we were able to, we had about fifteen thousand dollars in, in, in budgeted items for portable radios, which we were able to address that by inheriting the old portables from the fire department. Those have been refrat, re-flashed for our reserve officers now, and so we, we addressed that in a different way. The other expense had to do with the dockable laptops, that was covered through the CARES money. So, it did free up some money for us to move forward this year, rather than waiting until next year.
So that, this can be taken out of the present budget with your overrides from another?
I'm not asking for any monies over and above what we have already allocated for capital L.A. It's not a, it's not a new money request, if you will.
Just a different item.
Just a different item.
I need a motion in for F and I.
Would be to approve.
F and I?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously, thank you. Item A, conditional use permit, Wenton Sons. John, is that yours, I suppose?
This request is for thirty-eight twenty-one Belclaire Drive, conditional use permit for Wenton Sons under the formal name Tree Land LLC, for a conditional use permit request to construct and operate landscaping and tree nursery business in an A-one ag rural residential district, thirty-eight twenty-one Belclaire Drive. The property is currently used for limited outdoor storage by the, by the owners. Wenton Sons does own it now and has owned it for some years. As, we're all well aware, they, they currently operate their landscape business in kind of the heart of Wade Park at twenty-two Seventh Avenue North, which is primarily residential. The intent, when they bought this property, was to eventually use it for their business purposes. It is considered a conditional use permit due to the allowance for consideration in, in the district for similar uses to those in the area and otherwise allowed for under the ordinance. One of the ones, the uses that is allowed for under the ordinance as a permitted use is the, the tree nursery. So, the landscaping is kind of a natural connection to that and we have historically had landscaping businesses in the, the ag rural residential district in the past as well. The, the intent is to use it to construct a proposed one hundred by sixty pole building with potential for additional future buildings for indoor storage of equipment and vehicles. Within the proposed building would be some office space approximately thirty by thirty. The business currently employs about three people full-time and two part-time, varies a little bit seasonally. With spring, summer, fall hours of eight AM to six PM Monday to Friday, and eight AM to noon on Saturdays periodically as needed. Winter hours, of course, vary more due to their snow plowing operations and are more as needed. The applicants did note that they, as, with snow plowing, they focus more on residential services than commercial. It's just kind of their, their niche that they have fallen into. The existing location in, in the heart of Wade Park has not been terribly problematic for me at least. In the couple of years I've been here, we did work with them to get some storage out of the, out of the right-of-way that was resolved without a major issue. But it is kind of a, essentially a legal non-conforming use, it's not the ideal use for that area. And the intent would be to, over a period of a few years, they would transition servant, their operations more to this location. They know, do note the desire for indoor storage particularly because the nature of theft and vandalism to equipment is left unattended, so that drives a, a desire for indoor storage for that sort of stuff. We couldn't issue a building permit, the property's not been platted, that would be a condition of approval. The applicants opted to pursue the conditional use permit before the plats as, if there, if it would not be approved, then they would not go for the plat, they wouldn't be need to plat it at this time at least if they weren't approved for a conditional use permit. And we've seen that in the past as well, I don't have an issue with that, it makes sense to do it kind of sequentially. However, I would, I would not have an issue if the council agrees with approval of a permit for footing and foundation prior to the plating being completed, assuming approval for the conditional use permit, just to facilitate some groundwork in, in the remainder of the season. Knowing the weather outside as it is right now, that may be kind of a moot point right now, but if it's possible, they, I would encourage the ability to do so. The, they've proposed some pile areas for wood and brush, I would like to have some screening established on the sides of that for the neighboring properties as well as Belclaire Drive. Traditionally, I've recommended fencing for that sort of purpose. The applicants have expressed a desire to do trees or, or natural landscape. I would be open to that, as long as the neighbor that's most impacted would be accepting that, but I would leave that a little open-ended. Typically, I leave the, the landscape plan subject to, to my approval, to allow a little bit of variation. As with some others, we've seen, the, the city ordinance notes that a conditional use permit would be a trigger to have parking hard surface. Again, with the rural, rural nature of the area, I would encourage allowing an exemption from the requirement to hard surface, but with the acknowledgement that that could be triggered at, at the future if needed, or if an ordinance changes, if they expand or, or seek additional approval to do other things. I did have contact with the adjacent property owner who didn't have any objections to the request, but did ask that some of the trailers and vehicles being stored on-site be moved away from the western boundary or relocated. Didn't really have an issue with them being on the property, but asked that they could be rearranged a little bit and get them away from that side. Seems that there's some personal vehicles and RVs and maybe hunting trailers, that sort of thing that are being stored out there, either by the owners or friends of, and applicants didn't have an issue agreeing to that request. Planning commission reviewed their request at their meeting last week, they did not have any public comments, and they did recommend approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, proposed parking driving areas are exempted from need to be hard surface with concrete or asphalt. Future projects such as additional buildings or expansions or other subdivision of property may trigger need to hard surface parking areas at this time. Number two, plating of property may trigger need to, or excuse me, plating of the property must be completed prior to any building permit issuance or structures. Footing foundation permit and land disturbance permits may be issued prior to plating completion. Number three, parking is not allowed on Belclaire Drive. Number four, an updated outdoor storage and screening plan to shield outdoor areas from view of adjacent properties and Belclaire Drive shall be submitted and subject to review and approval of planning and community development director. Number five, any burning activities are su- subject to review approval of city Wade Park fire chief and any requirements thereof shall be followed and maintained. Number six, all necessary construction activities shall be completed to satisfaction of city Wade Park building official prior to commencement of any activities in impacted areas. Number seven, any new exterior signage shall require a permit prior to installation or fabrication of signage to provide for review and approval. Number eight, ground and/or pylon signs shall require a footing inspection prior to construction to confirm compliance of city code. Number nine, at any time, city sewer water may be made available to the property, the property will be required to connect to them and abandon and seal private septic and well facilities within one year. And lastly, number ten, vehicles and trailers located on-site shall, shall be subject to a parking and storage plan and screening as approved by planning and community development director or otherwise removed from the property. That would conclude my report and recommendation.
All right, council, any questions for John?
John, in, relevant to the property would be to the west, is there any houses on that property, or is that just all farm?
A property to the west, there is a house nearby, that, that's really the only residential, residential dwelling right nearby. There's a house further to the east, the, the owner to the west is the one that contacted me regarding the vehicles, some of the stuff that was stored on-site. I'll move up to the, if I can get back to that general location map, you can see it here.
Can you expand that?
Yep, I'm doing, going in right now here. I'll zoom in for you. Just a, there's a little bit of lag in my computer, so I apologize for that. They didn't, they didn't object to the request at all, she didn't have any, any concerns, but just would, would like to see that, if, if they're going to be building out there, she'd like to see some of those things relocated. You can see here, the, their driveway to the west runs pretty much right against the property line here. So, you can see that, if I can get this, see the, the house right in this area?
Well, that's the house there.
Yep, that's the house there, you can see that the, some of the items they have is stored right along that western boundary, kind of in that area and then to the north. And then they have some, some of their brush piles and things over here, it is orderly, but I don't know the conditions of, of what's out there, I've, I've not seen, I didn't even realize that there was that extensive of stuff out there.
And according to what I'm seeing, the, the two buildings they're proposing would be on the south end there?
Yep, more to the south end.
So, it would be out of?
That, yep, what you'd be seeing for, for storage, for the landscaping materials and brush piles and, and tree, tree nursery items, that'll be more to the north, so the buildings that are being proposed would provide kind of a natural screen to, to those things from the road. So, really, it's, it's, the folks that are impacted by and for the most would be the, the folks right to the west here. Now, the, the next folks to the east are quite a bit further away across the, across the farmland here. I didn't receive any comments aside from, from that one.
And that area is presently what, ag?
It's ag rural residential, yep.
I'll move to approve with the resolution, one through ten.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Item B, vacation of right-of-way Burnix and Sand Companies, is that yours too, John, or is it?
That's mine.
All right.
Run to catch up on the zoom here. This request was submitted by, a dual submittal by Burnix and Sand Companies for a vacation of a city, city property, the path and trail that runs in between the properties to Rock Island Pond. Some of the council members may, may be aware, and Mr. Swans, Swans is aware as well, we had taken a look at that property at least once or twice in the years past. You know, whether there might be an option to, to vacate it and-
Hey, John, just let me, let me, I should read this notice of public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies.
The Wade Park City Council will hold a public hearing at City Hall at six thirty PM or soon thereafter on Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, to hear the request of Burnix and Sand Companies to vacate the following, which is the property between the two properties. Anybody interested can attend, or, in this case, I think we have one of individuals on the phone, so, all right, John.
Yep, sorry for jumping ahead, just too excited here. We, we did work with Burnix and Sand Companies on, you know, what would be needed to look at vacating that, and they did-
John, can you move your mic up closer?
Yep, is that a little better?
Yep.
Better? I just gotta kind of lean into it to try and catch the audio from myself and the computer. We did work with Burnix and Sand Companies and they did have that property surveyed since they were pursuing the request. And they submitted a joint petition after we took a look at earlier this year when, in staff's opinion, we didn't really have an air, a need to maintain that area any longer for city purposes. The access to the, the Rock Island Pond area is maintained and available via the, the former Public Works facility. We have reviewed the request and determined that it really doesn't pose any issues, we, we don't require it any longer, and we have been looking at vacating city properties that we don't have a need for when they could be perhaps better used somewhere else. And transferring it to the properties when we vacate, we do split it evenly. They have indicated that, that they would then work to, to kind of deed it between each other and use it just for their own access purposes. So, everything seems well, well thought out there for the proposed vacation. We did the, the public notice, previously, we gave the two weeks notice and the times, and we haven't had any public comments received through the, through today at least, for sure, and, again, I, I do note that Jamie Thielen from Sand Companies, who is kind of coordinated and quarterbacked the request on behalf of both companies, is, is on the line if, if there's a desire for him to comment at all, but otherwise, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the vacation. We look, we've looked at it as staff and we would like to see that go forward.
I guess my question is, if they want it and they're going to vacate it, are they going to remove the tar that's there and make it a green space?
They're gonna, their intent is to keep it for, for access purposes, so they, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be really changing it from what's there. It would just be dedicated to them and gets it off our, our roles to, to maintain or plow.
So, they're going to keep the tar?
As far as I'm aware.
Use it?
There wouldn't be a requirement to do that if they, if they wish to, to green space it, they could, they can. And here, I can unmute Jamie with Sand Companies if you'd like to have him speak. This council, of course, if-
Yep. It's public hearing, so he can speak.
Go ahead, Jamie, I'll try to get you here.
Okay, this is Jamie Thielen, I'm CEO of Sand Companies, thank you council members, mayor for the time tonight. Yeah, we would, we would actually probably extend our parking lot a little bit further into that area. We're a little bit short on parking for, for it, so, and we'd maintain that road also and redo it in the next year or two.
Would that entail, would that entail removal of the trees?
Some of the trees may be removed, yeah, depending, because I know we're going to have to do some, some stormwater work in that area also.
Once the property is theirs, it's theirs to do with what they wish, correct?
Yeah, right.
So, it's mute, if, you know.
Any other questions for him? Any other questions in the public hearing, otherwise we can close the public?
Well, the only other question I would have is, you know, we used to use that once in a while for your fishing.
Yeah, kids' fish contest, we used to go-
Do we have any other access to that pond besides over by City Hall?
No, City-
Or City Garage?
City Garage.
City Garage, yep.
So, that would be the only access to that area then? And do we have ample room? And I'm assuming if we would ever decide to sell, we'd have to keep an easement over there rather than access here.
Correct, and it's always been in my long-range plan, whatever you want to do, we need, we don't have any parking for our residents to attend that park. And along the west side between hockey zone and, and the compo site, there's a space in there and we can pave that and put in a, you know, a parking lot in there, so, yep. It's just a matter of when and what we want to do with that, but I think we want to wait till all facility studies done, but I, I would be, my recommendation that you always retain at least sixty to eighty feet of width there, long park, or hockey zone. To facilitate a trail to access and a small parking lot for people, so, no matter what you do with that.
So we have plenty of property over there to, uh, give that access?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that would be the best solution for the city.
Anything else for the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We're closed at six fifty-nine.
I'll move to approve the resolution. Um, to vacate the public right-of-way.
Second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right, item C, consider facility lease agreement with Center Care for use of former Public Works Building. I will tell you that this is a, a work in progress, uh. The one you have is the first one that was sent out, there's been some grammatical errors, you know, and saying that. One of them says that they're leasing and the other one says they're the owner or whatever, there's a few little things like that. I had an email today with the lady and she said that they'd like to also say instead of, uh, three stalls, that they would like to say also, uh, office space, which that makes sense. That's a, there wasn't much, uh, there, most of them were just minor, minor errors and, and they're working on a, on a few of them. I don't have the final draft from it yet, uh, we're not sure that we can charge them rent, uh, because if we do. We may, uh, end up putting that on the tax rolls and we don't wanna do that, but I think we can make an agreement with them for something.
Well, I see in the agreement, you know, the rent was five hundred a month, but also in the agreement under utilities, it said the landlord would invoice tenant.
Right, because we're gonna, we're gonna get the bill.
We're gonna get the bills. We're gonna charge them.
All, all you, all, uh, XL energy bills.
That include heat?
XL and?
That is heat.
And, uh.
Whatever we get from them, heat and.
Internet and that type of, any, any.
That's up to them, that's on them, yep. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I'll just say that this was a, a proposed, uh, lease agreement, we received this from Center Care. And those are terms that were not specified very clearly, we obviously need to make some clarification on it. But that, exactly to that point, what's actually gonna count as part of the utilities would be something that would need to be clarified. And then even how you're gonna, you know, make sure that the only utilities that are being charged are the ones that they're using, I'm not certain if this is a building that would continue to be used by the city. But we certainly would wanna be able to say this is city's use, this is, uh, used by Center Care. We're just, this was a proposal that was brought, we took a look through it and there's a couple of things that need to be addressed and there's a couple of things that need to be clarified. The language that's being used just isn't doing the job just yet, but it's the, it's a work in progress, we're mostly giving a status update on it.
Bill?
Yeah, I would say that, um, as you bring up the utilities, I would also include the, uh, water and sewer bill.
I was gonna ask.
So, uh, we're not gonna use much in there.
Well, they, and they won't either, to be honest with you.
Right, but if you wanted to be fair, that would be the, uh, as far as internet, uh, we do have our own wifi in there, there's really, there's really no cost if they wanna use it. It's not real reliable, just because of the, the lines that we have there, um, so, I would say there's no cost for internet.
We gave, we gave them the number of the person that does our wiring and our internets, our phone service here, so if they wanted to talk to him to put something else in, it'd be at their expense.
Exactly.
So.
So what is our? The biggest thing on this would be the rent then.
That's the only thing that, I, we, Paul's working on that, we're not sure that we can charge them rent because if we do, it may put it on the tax rolls and we don't wanna do that, so, uh.
Yeah, there becomes, there becomes an issue when it's a public property and it's being rented out to a single individual corporation, an impact of that can be that that building then goes on the tax roll. And that's put in, that's in Minnesota statutes, so if we're gonna make an opportunity for Center Care to use this facility, which my understanding is to assist the public with COVID testing. We need to make sure we do it in a way that doesn't have a, an inadvertent side effect that we don't want.
Would you be able to charge, uh, uh, what would they call it, a user fee, I guess?
Well, that's what we're gonna be looking to explore is, is what the option is there, uh, sort of, for example, there's opinion pieces, you, you know, cities will write questions and ask. How do we interpret this law, how do we try to achieve the end result that we want? And advisory opinions are produced by a couple of different entities in the state, I'm reviewing those to see if any of them have spoken to this issue. Cause obviously we wanna do something for the public's benefit, having someplace for COVID testing to be, uh, to be, uh, provided. But again, we need to just make sure that we're not generating a problem for ourselves, or at least generating, uh, an unexpected consequence.
Well, we don't care if we get rent for that building or not, I mean.
We're, we're, if you, if you think about it, we're already getting rent from it because, uh, I, I took an average of those six months of winter months and the average, uh, XL bill is eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and, and they've agreed to pay that, so over six months, that's about a five thousand dollars. We're saving the city already, so anything.
Utility costs.
Just in utility costs, uh, they don't know how long they're gonna be there, they're, they're, they're hoping they're gonna be there one month and COVID's gone, just like everybody, but, uh, the reason they went to a year with it is. They're looking for a facility, they don't have to keep moving from place to place and they're hoping that, they want it someplace for the winter, this works for the winter. After winter, we'll, they'll see if they still need any spaces at all, any place for COVID testing, and if they do, they'd like to stay in one spot, so that, that's why it's a one-year lease.
Well, you know, another question came up on this building was, uh, do you know what hours they're gonna be using it or?
No, that's, so that's another item that wasn't clarified as far as this document went, as I said, this is a.
I think that they, I, you, you weren't there, Bill, I, I think like seven till seven or something or.
That's what I.
And they'll have Saturday and Sunday service too, uh, there, so it'll be, it, it will be used a lot. Uh, but again, that's at no cost to us because whatever they use for energy and stuff, they'll pay for it, so. It's a quiet business, it's, I think it's a good neighborhood business, I think it's a good public use of it, I, I think it's a good thing for Wait Park, people come from out of town, they're gonna say, where do we go, and they're gonna tell them Wait Park and. I think it's good for our businesses even, they're gonna come to town, they're gonna eat and they're gonna go to Menards and Home Depot and whatever, so. Anyway, when we get, this is for, basically for your information, I guess, uh, once we get the final draft, we'll, we can send it out to you and whatever, but.
I think it's a great thing to do.
So, they would like to be in by November first, I don't know if that's possible or not.
Is the motion we're looking for is to.
To allow them.
To, uh, approve the use and.
Right.
Let staff and our attorney work out the details?
That's right, that's, that, that's correct.
I'll second that one.
All right, that's a motion.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, item D, nuisance abatement authorization request, Pogansky Automotive, four oh eight Third Street North, John?
And, uh, leading into this, I would note that we do have Greg, Greg Pogansky presumably on behalf of, uh, Pogansky Automotive on the line, so. I'll go through the report and then if the, uh, council wishes to, uh, hear him, you're certainly welcome to. Uh, as, as you're aware, city staff and the city attorney, uh, have been coordinating regarding nuisance abatement for Pogansky Automotive. Uh, a previous notice, uh, which is attached in your packet, was served to the owner, uh, at my request via Wait Park PD to ensure that they got it. Earlier this year, uh, that was, uh, just pre-COVID and, uh, at the time when we were preparing to, to kinda further act on that and, uh. Potentially request abatement action, uh, there was some discussion and we opted to, uh, kinda ease off of enforcement actions, this one and, um, a handful of others, uh, just given the unknowns at that time. Uh, I did con- continue to monitor the property during my daily commute, just in and out of the office, I go by it twice daily, so I'm usually pretty attuned to, you know, seeing what comes and goes. Uh, staff with noted direction from the city council has now reinstated actions on this and, uh, a, a couple other nuisance properties, uh. One of which was, uh, originally slated for action tonight, which has been brought into compliance. Uh, I did coordinate with, uh, the city attorney and Wait Park PD in serving the attached notice on October second. Uh, regarding the need to bring the property into compliance and requesting an abatement hearing if, if that was not done. Uh, I am requesting, uh, the approval of abatement procedures by city council by which, uh, city would hire, uh, necessary services to bring the property to compliance by either, uh. Some combination of towing or impounding, either, uh, any unlicensed or junk vehicles and removing any junk onsite is, uh, determined by myself. The city would then levy the cost against the property via taxes. Uh, as of, uh, this afternoon, there was, uh, twenty vehicles on the property and eight of those twenty were, uh, had expired tabs or, uh, unli- otherwise unlicensed, so considered junk condition, so. Not quite fifty percent and, but not, not where we need it to be either, uh, in, in my opinion, the business practices of, of this business are not sustainable. And that the vehicles tend to remain onsite so long that the vehicle licenses often expire before they're claimed by the owners. Uh, as well as the, the periodic vehicle that arrives onsite, which is in, uh, junk or in a operable condition. Um, I've tried to work with the owners in the past on, on some plans or efforts to bring the property to compliance and keep it that way, but, uh, despite maybe some good intentions, the, the owners haven't followed up on this and the property. Uh, will continually backslide into disarray and nuisance conditions, it can be good for a while, but then it gets bad. Uh, staff, uh, did inspect the property and as I noted, uh, we are in nuisance conditions as of today still. So I'd request, uh, an approval of the abatement request and, uh, let staff run with doing, uh, whatever may be needed to bring it into compliance and, and then, uh, levy those costs to the property.
Council, your thoughts?
My thoughts was, we gave him a conditional use permit, which we revoked. In hopes that this ordinance would send him a message that we don't want what's going on there. Um, I thought if, in fact, he was not in compliance, that we could revoke his right to do business there, is that correct or was that incorrect at that time?
I'd have to talk to legal opinion on that one, but.
Yeah, I, I don't recall the determination at, at that time, that was so.
I know it was supposed to have more teeth in it than the, than the conditional use permit.
Right.
I would agree with that, and maybe this is it, that, that we can do this.
I mean, just cleaning, it's been how long, we gave him the conditional use to do business there. I'm gonna be the best businessman that you're gonna have on Third Street, couple of years later, it was nothing but a junk area, we tried to get it cleaned up at that time, we gave him three separate breaks under conditional use. And it doesn't seem to do any good, you'll clean it up and a couple of months later, it's just as bad or worse than it was before. Um, this is a bunch of, I won't say it, but it, it's. When's the person gonna learn, I mean, how can we?
This would be a start.
Do to get this thing to clean up?
This is it, right here, we'll clean it up, if he doesn't, we can go clean it up with this, so, and we will. And, and especially now, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, we've argued this mic together for a long time. And we've just been blackballed right to the heck on this, and now we do have a nice development that's going right next to them.
That's right.
It's time to clean it up, so.
But is it gonna stay cleaned up, I mean?
Yeah, it will, because now.
Every month, we're gonna go in there and start?
If we have to.
I mean.
If we have to.
They're gonna get the hint.
Well, maybe this'll, maybe when they get the bill for this, they'll get the hint.
Didn't seem to help before.
They didn't get the bill, now they'll get a bill.
Well, I hope it does.
Me too.
It's just. We've given this person, one person, more chances than we've given anybody else in this town, so.
We really need to put some teeth in this.
All right, somebody wanna?
I haven't been on the council that long, but I've been frustrated all the time, I've been here with all of the, yes, we're gonna do it, yes, no, we're not. The, the junk sits there, then it's, it's gonna be gone and it's still sitting there, and I've had that question many times, when are we actually gonna get action taken over there to get it cleaned up?
This is it, somebody wanna move the resolution approving nuisance abatement action against Pogansky?
I'll second Vic.
I have a motion and a second, Paul?
You have, you have Mr. Pogansky on the line.
We don't have to listen to him.
Well, we can, what's he gotta say? We haven't voted yet.
Does he have anything to say?
This is in discussion process.
So.
So what do I, what do I do in a case that the vehicles aren't mine? I, I don't, no, I, I've made several phone calls to the vehicles that are still sitting there in question. And I, I can't get ahold of the owners, I don't know what to do about getting tabs on them, I, I call them and tell them they're, they're not worth fixing. And there they sit, and I, I don't know what, I, I, I don't have any answers for that. And that, that's the issue that I keep running into.
Have it towed.
Have it towed, towed where?
Nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna drop a vehicle off at my garage tonight and leave, I'm not gonna leave it parked there, if it's there tomorrow morning, I'll have it towed, have it towed. That's not your responsibility when they leave it there.
So, so the vehicles that are still there in question and the ones that, that are up for abatement, I, they're, they're gonna get towed and impounded and charged to me?
That's right, because.
People already don't have money, they already don't have the money to pay to have it fixed, now it's gonna come back on me that I have to pay for their vehicle?
If they don't have the money to have it fixed, why are you accepting it in the first place?
Well, cause I don't know that, I don't know when it, when it shows up, I call them, I tell them what's wrong with it, I tell them what it's gonna cost, they say, you know what, I don't, I don't wanna fix it. And next thing you know, there it sits, and there it sits, and there it sits, and then they stop answering their phone or they get their phone number changed, or I, I'm, I got my hands tied, I have no way of, of contacting the owner and so what if, I. So that, that's the answer is just have it towed?
That's, that's, that's the answer, have it towed.
You know what?
And you know what, we've heard this for three years or four years.
We heard this before.
This is a.
Same dang thing.
I'm waiting for the little thing at the end that says this is a recorded message because it's, it's the same thing we've heard before, I mean, I, you know, it's one of those things, I can feel for you, but I just can't reach you. You know, we, we've been here so many times that if, if nothing else, maybe it teaches you not, not to take them or to, uh, get, maybe they'll get the message, I don't know, I, but this isn't on us, this is on you, so.
Fair enough. Which vehicles are the ones that you're talking about, John? You said you counted ten, we counted five.
Eight.
There's eight out of the twenty, he said.
So, so I need to know which ones they are right now.
Go look at the tabs or lack thereof.
Yeah, take a flashlight and go look at the tabs. Pretty simple.
Lack of tabs.
Well, I tell you what, I think, um, we've heard the same argument over and over and over and all you wanna do is argue, I'm gonna call for the vote.
No, I don't wanna argue, I run a business there.
I'm calling for the vote, thank you.
We, I, I'm, I, I've never shut anybody off, but I am gonna shut this one off because we've had it for so long that.
I can fix it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's no city ordinance that says.
You, that, that, that resolution has been approved, so you, you didn't clean it up, we'll clean it up.
Thank you.
All right, item E, proposed CARES Act Small Business Relief Grant Awards.
John, can you take that one, I'll do the next one? Do you wanna do the, the grant one?
Item E.
Yep, I've got the small business awards.
Yep.
Okay, move this back closer again. Just gotta catch up on my spot here on the packet.
Good question, are we gonna do this tomorrow then, start the cleanup?
I'll be contacting, uh, the tow companies, junk companies, so, uh, the timeline, I don't know, um, but as soon as I can and if myself and/or a, um, probably a police escort would be there to. Point out which ones go, which, which ones stay, if they, if they get them out of there before, then all the better, um, but. We'll make an operation and I'll probably send an update to the council as well, just so you know where it's at, but I'm hoping sooner rather than later here, that's the intent.
Okay, good, all right, item E.
The, uh, CARES Act Small Business Relief Grant Funding Awards, uh, as you're aware, previously, uh, the council opted to allocate a hundred thousand of the CARES Act funding to small business relief grants. To help, uh, our local businesses, uh, that were impacted by COVID over twenty twenty. Uh, initially, an additional twenty-five thousand was made available through Stearns County, uh, to be utilized after local funds were depleted. We also were able to use the, uh, Stearns County online application portal and coordinated with city staff, or excuse me, county staff through that process. Uh, during the application period, uh, we, we received quite a few more applications than we were maybe anticipating or, uh, that I anticipated, a, a total of forty-one applications. One was later withdrawn, so we had a total of forty active applications. Uh, in mid-September, we were notified by Stearns County that the county was willing to make additional funds available for the grants. That allowed us to increase the maximum funding amount from our initial, uh, our initial seventy-five hundred per. that allowed us to increase the maximum funding amount from our initial our initial seventy-five hundred per business up to fifteen thousand per business for justified expenses. We contacted applicants to make them aware of additional funding opportunity and to request updated expense documentation if they wanted to pursue that. I did review all the applications for completeness and to ensure that the claimed expenses were eligible. The bulk of claims were associated with building and tenant rent, utilities, personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies, all of which were considered eligible expenses for this purpose. Most of these businesses experienced full or partial closure in the spring and summer under the earlier emergency orders from the governor. I did attach a spreadsheet outlining the requested and proposed funding amounts for businesses. Several applicants did not meet the criteria for some or all funding and or did not respond to multiple follow-up contact attempts attempts. And those are reflected in the spreadsheet in red on the right-hand column. I would note that several are recommended for either no funding based on lack of submitted information or documentation after repeated contact attempts. Or in one case, each ineligible and ineligible claim. And in another instance, which was attached to the item we just heard, ongoing city ordinance violations that staff believes would be inappropriate to provide funding for. If approved, staff will coordinate with Stearns County to transfer funds to the city and begin dispersment of grant awards immediately thereafter. We did submit the the proposed totals to the county mid-last week, so they are ready to go pending an approval from the the council. I apologize that the chart is pretty small text here, but I I tried to squeeze it on one page just for clarity, but it it's gonna be a little bit tough to read, so I'll certainly try to respond to any questions.
But do you have any questions?
Well, I can say one thing. It's a good thing that we kind of insisted in putting this in this call, this care package. I know some people didn't wanna do it, but I think it was a good program. I think it showed that we show interest in our business as a council. And I've got nothing but good remarks from quite a few different business people that did apply for this. So I think this is one plus or one feather in our hat that we can all kind of pat each other and that we gave gave back that we could have kept for ourselves. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this at this time.
The attached spreadsheet and resolution? Pardon me? Move to approve the attached spreadsheet and resolution?
Right.
All right.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. And item F, Consider Resolution on Phase Two CARES Act Funding.
Well, I'll I'll try to take this and fill you in. So before you is a resolution approving Phase Two expenses. As you know, when we came to you with Phase One, we had a we had a list. And there's an attached spreadsheet. It's a little bit longer and bigger. Shows you where we're at. Some of the things that we we don't have expenses for yet cuz we're still working on that and we are under that time time crunch, so we have to wait until we see exactly where all those expenses come in at the very end on Phase One. We also were didn't know where we were at with the grant program. And so basically, if you would go to the bottom of your of your sheet, it looks like this. Right now, if with expenses for what we have spent to date is around two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars of Phase One. We have an additional one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand sitting out there yet. We're not, again, we have to wait until we see the final numbers come in. The business grant, we did originally have twenty-five thousand in for COVID expenses that wouldn't go through the FEMA. Found out that we need to bump that up to fifty thousand. And so basically, if you did the math, we're sitting at a rate around a hundred or five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. We have five-hundred-and-eighty-five to spend. So that leaves us a balance right now roughly about forty-five thousand, give or take. So Shawna put together for for your consideration tonight for this resolution to keep this thing moving forward because our timeframe is coming up is some additional items that we could consider to use that rest of that forty-five thousand, or if it's forty, or if it's sixty thousand, we don't know yet. So before you tonight is a resolution on that and the spreadsheet. I can kinda go through this a little bit with you. I don't know everything per se as well as Shawna did, but I'll try to do my best. So some of the items on here are civil service board laptops for twenty-seven hundred dollars. These are two from Shawna, the Civics Plus software system that we currently use. There's an HR module. And that was for sixty-five hundred dollars and it and it has a ongoing annual fee associated with that for thirty-two, two-hundred dollars. There's also another one that that's very attractive to to staff is an agenda management system. I I apologize cuz we didn't get this until this morning, but I did put it in front of you. There's a packet. It's a purple one like this if you wanna look and read it. So it's just more for your information. That that module is eleven thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars with an ongoing annual fee of seventy-five sixty. The library furnace did go, so we we are replacing it as we are right now. And it is getting the GPS system put on it, not global positioning. It's for the the COVID virus. So that will meet and handle all that. So that's air conditioning and the furnace itself. That's twelve thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Public Works Training Room, as you noticed last time when we were out there, it's a little challenging. So we we put some money in there. We're not exactly sure what that solution is, but there's probably a number of different things that we can do. So we've put ten thousand in for that. And then finally, knowing that the Public Works, you know, room is is bad with all the concrete and the windows, we'll put, we think we're gonna probably have the same problem with the ledge. And so we put, we don't know what that is yet, but so we're just throwing some money in here for it. At the end of the day, what Shawna is asking for in the resolution is to prove the list of whatever you feel should be on the list or not on the list. And then have she would have discretion on which which items to do. Now, depending on how much money's available and which ones we deem that are important, you're gonna have to pick and choose to try to fit this, I call it a Tetris puzzle. You know, you might you might have only twenty-seven hundred dollars. Well, that's an easy one. You might have fifteen thousand. Well, maybe you're gonna do the twenty-seven and the twelve or something like that. So that's where we're at tonight. I can try to answer any questions that you would have.
Well, I'd just like to to put in a plug here that what we could be using for some of this problem for hearing is a portable hearing loop system. We can take it from one room to the next.
Right.
And it would enable people like me to be able to hear what they said rather than just hear the noise.
No, you're you're right. And we did talk to Tierney a long time about that. So those are one of the things that we need to look into to make sure that.
Yeah, cuz I thought last time we discussed that and I thought that was we were gonna look into that. I hope we are because you're right. We don't have to put in twenty-five thousand dollars in this room if we can move something from another room into here. And then move it back or take it someplace else, so.
There's some good systems out there.
Yeah, good. I hope we do that. Other comments on this, anybody?
I guess if he's looking for approval to look at, I would go with item number one. Number four, five, and six, that would be pretty close to the amount that is excess. I I would like to look into the Civic Plus stuff, seeing that there's an annual fee, which is pretty high, just to see what it is, and that can be discussed at a later time.
That's your motion?
That would be my motion.
Your second?
I I wish Shawna was here to talk about that cuz I really don't know much.
Yeah, I I think, I think where my concern is that the ten thousand dollars on those two every mon, almost eleven thousand dollars annually for those two, and I don't know what we get for my, you know. We we could do is, I didn't hear a second, so let's start again. Maybe we if we wanted to rank them, we could put Civil Service Board laptops as number one.
Um.
Or the library.
I would put library number one, civil service board number two.
Probably that now the.
Public Works needs number that.
I would look at that as that portable system, though, and that should be reduced a lot less than ten thousand dollars.
But yeah, we might do some acoustics out there. We might do some drapes that might.
You wanna make that number three?
Make that number three and the ledge number.
Number four?
Four.
And the Civic Plus, the first Civic Plus, five, and the second one, six?
Yeah, or just throw it out until we can further bring it up.
Well, we can do it in that order, and if we got enough, they can do them all. And if they don't, then they do them in those orders.
I wouldn't wanna do any Civic Plus until we know more about it, for one thing.
Yeah, we just got it tonight. I don't like that. I don't, cuz we we have a little time yet, I think, till November, November three, when when is that?
I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can be brought up at our next workshop and put on the agenda. So that we know what it is. I mean, just get something out there.
To be honest with you, it's not even a lot of money.
Well, it is every year.
No, but I mean, the initial cost isn't that much. If we don't do it this year, we can do it next year anyway. It's thirteen, seventeen thousand dollars. It's an it's that extra year cost. I agree with you. It's that costly fee every year.
Maybe I would recommend is that you could approve it underneath this ranking and give her discretion on that. And also say that she would like you would like to have an explanation on the ongoing cost of what it is. And maybe that can be done through an email or through a.
Might couldn't be done.
Anyway.
The information could be, but the vote can't be, so.
Right.
Oh, I, not to interrupt, I just heard from Carla. She sent a message here through the Zoom. The the purchase end date for CARES is November fifteenth.
November fifteenth, so we should have a meeting before that.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, is that what you said?
Yeah, but you won't have the time to expense it off. I don't know.
I don't know when the next meeting. I thought it was before that.
Nope, because they had to make it later because of the mail-in voting.
The thirteenth is a Friday.
Hmm.
It's the twelfth.
The twelfth?
Jordan, you're gonna canvass the vote?
Yeah, I can.
November twelfth.
I don't know when that when that November meeting is. Is it November ninth?
No. Changed it.
The sixteenth and.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Carla, hello?
I'm gonna try to put you on here. Go ahead, Carla.
We are having a special meeting to canvass the voting on November twelfth.
When's our regular meeting?
It's at four thirty. Regular meeting won't be until that following week, like the nineteenth, after the fifteenth.
Okay.
Nineteenth, I wanna say.
Yeah, that's right. Nineteenth.
Fifteenth.
But we could put it on that special meeting agenda if it need to be.
It would have to go on a special meeting, but that only gives you three days' purchase.
Have one on the twelfth. But special meeting on canvas of the vote?
Well, that's what we do.
That's what it's for.
That's what she said.
We're zooming that one.
We're zoom meeting it, yeah.
Twelfth is a Zoom meeting.
Yep, twelfth is a Zoom meeting.
Change it. Can't.
We can't because of the absentee voting. We won't know our numbers. We're we're gonna be lucky if we have.
It's very fine timeline to canvass the election.
Say, Carla, Bill here.
Yes.
As long as we approve it, do we or or do we need to actually cut the check?
Well, we have to have the invoice.
Okay, which that would be easier to do.
The next plus week, all we'd have to do is tell them, you know, call them and tell them on the thirteenth that we're approving this if we are. And then I would think they can get us the invoice right away.
Yeah, I would too.
Yep.
Let's let's do that. Let's approve one, two, three, four as we did.
That's a motion on second.
And 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 five and six, we'll talk about it special session. And see if we have any money left at that time. We may not even have that money left.
So I'll make that motion, one, two, three, four prioritized. Five and six will leave off.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Bill, what did you want?
Yeah, let's um let's be a little bit more clear, I think, because it's a resolution, cuz the resolution calls for the items on this list and they're not numbered.
Okay.
So let's just call it, if you would call out the ones that you're wanting to move forward and the other two that we.
Number one will be the library upgrade furnace. Number two will be civil service board laptops. Number three will be the Public Works Training Room, and number four is the lodge meeting room.
The ledge.
Or the ledge.
And then maybe for just for the resolution, I think, put in that the council will discuss the other two items. Just so it's in the resolution. Would you agree, Carla?
Yes, I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay, add a further.
Civic Plus will be talked about at a later date.
That way we have it in there in case we have money left over for it.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Yes, I think we shouldn't have had it on the list.
Nope.
Include it.
Oh, okay.
Should have what, Frank?
We should have included it on the list.
That's two Civic things. All right, it's approved three to one. What's next? Oh, item G, Consider Tyson Kart Proposal and G and J Oni Proposal for Chairs at the Ledge.
Correct. I apologize. I just got back from vacation last week and trying to put some of the stuff together, so Shawna did a little staff report on it. I'll just kinda cut to the chase and to say that we need carts to store five thousand chairs. Been working with Tyson Design on coming up with a solution and storage and how this is gonna work. I did put in front of your chair tonight a basically a little synopsis. There's a picture of actually the prototype of the of the cart. And then I did kind of attach a, it's not confirmed yet, the seating chart out there, but just what the count of the chairs was for the site. So I'll just back up. We need, this prototype will hold two-hundred-and-eight chairs for each cart. We are gonna plan to store them on the stage on the east and or south and north walls. We can put ten chairs, ten carts on, or five on the north wall, five on the south wall. We can stack them too high. Design or Tyson Design has made that modification with their with their with their cart design to be able to forklift them up and stack them too high. That puts twenty carts on stage. They will be covered with a from basically an arning or cart cover, whatever you wanna call it, so that these chairs will stay out there every all year long. Now, obviously, in the summer, they'll be out set up, and so the carts will be on the stage, but they'll be covered. If they have chairs on them, they'll be covered. We gotta try to keep the birds and the dirt and the dust all out of it. So that's the reason we're doing this. It's the best solution that we had. Before, I had planned forty thousand dollars for for storage in carts at the old Gilzer House. That was before we knew that we were gonna look at doing anything different there. And I had forty thousand in the budget for for trailers, cuz I was, my thought was is we put them over at the Gilzer House underneath some sort of shed. They would be permanently mounted on a trailer and you drag the trailer over and so forth. Well, that's gone. So at this point, we're gonna need twenty carts on stage, and that will get us forty-one sixty on the stage, and the bowl is estimated at forty-one thirty-eight. Give or take chair here or there. So we're pretty close. If in fact that we have more chairs at the in the in the bowl itself than what we have carts there, well, we have four more of them. They will be stored stored at the cold storage building, just down the street. We're also gonna need chairs for, we're gonna use these chairs in the green room and some other areas like that, too. So we're not using all five thousand of them out there. So we're looking to get twenty-four carts with covers so that they are protected. We're not having to clean and wash them every year. The price per carts, what Tyson came up with other design is twenty-five hundred dollars per per cart with twenty-four, so that's a total of sixty thousand dollars. And then we got nineteen thousand seven fifty was the price from the arning company to build the the cart covers for it. So the grand total, what we're looking at is seventy-nine thousand seven fifty. I had eighty thousand budgeted. I guess couldn't get any closer if I tried, but.
No.
It's, so that's where we're at. I will take questions and.
But you got any questions or comments on it?
I do. This was one problem that should have been resolved when this thing was built. It was suggested when we did the plans that we put storage underneath the stage. And at that time, everybody was complaining that it's gonna cost us a few extra dollars to do that. You know what's gonna happen? This eighty thousand dollars is going to expand, I would bet, within two years to over two-hundred thousand dollars because you're gonna wanna outside storage facility because you're gonna find when you start stacking these in the stage area that these things will probably be in the way. And when entertainers are coming in and you wanna move these around, take chairs out, put them back in, it's gonna be one hell of a mess. And when entertainers are coming in and you wanna move these around, take chairs out, put them back in, it's gonna be one hell of a mess. The money saved by putting the proper storage built into this area to begin with should have been listened to instead of frowned upon.
Well, we talked about that, we talked.
Oh, Mike, that was way more than eighty thousand dollars.
So what, you're gonna build a frickin' outside storage facility for another hundred thousand? Plus this eighty, you're talking over two-hundred thousand probably? If you want another storage facility, tell me what's cheaper.
Yep, so.
It's, it's too late now, but that's my comment.
You're absolutely right, and ideally, it would have been right to have storage underneath.
You sold it.
It would have been right to have storage underneath there, that would have been my choice also. I mean, that, you couldn't get any easier, you don't have to use forklift, you're just rolling them in and out.
Yeah.
That price was about five-hundred thousand dollars from Jeff Ortell.
Yeah, it was not cheap.
It was not cheap, and that, that's why we ended up going this way. To answer your second question, this has been run through New West and their promoter, or they're not their, well, their promoter was part of it, but we really didn't have much to say about it. But his production manager um has visited the site a couple times, I've shown him the plan, what it is. The stage is actually wider than what they're normally used to. This is not taking up any extra space on the stage, and nobody will even know they're there. Yes, we have outlets on each of those walls that they're gonna need access to. This has been planned out to leave three-foot opening for those outlets. Um they're no more than fifty inches deep, so it's easy to get in and out of it, and nobody will even know it, so.
When we start stacking, do we have a forklift that is gonna be able to handle the weight?
Yes.
We already have a forklift?
Yeah. Yep.
Alright, what's your wishes?
So I just, and that was, my question was, so they're gonna be, the carts are gonna be stacked empty on stage?
When they're in?
When the chairs are off?
Yep.
Correct.
And assuming you gotta do all that, you gotta empty the carts before the road crew shows up to set up the stage, so. But they're gonna be put back right on the stage?
Yep. Same spot that they would be if they were full.
I, I didn't want them on stage at all.
Yeah.
I was hoping they'd get carted off to the old Public Works Building, you know, on a train.
Oh shit.
That's what I was saying, that all connect together and you'd.
See, this is a problem, you know, if, if we're gonna keep chairs outside, I'm assuming that you're gonna wanna take them down after each show.
In my opinion, yes, Mike, but I don't know if that's up to me.
I mean, that, you know, this is the problem.
If you don't, I think the weather will deteriorate.
Well, you have to take them down if you're not gonna have a show for a week or two weeks or three weeks, you gotta take them down.
Yeah.
That's up to the.
These, honestly, I would agree, I didn't know about the stage either. I'm, I'm going on what they're saying, it, it works, it's not gonna be, they're not gonna be in the way. I don't see them being any more abused on that stage than sitting inside the old Public Works Building as far as dirt and weather goes because they're gonna be underneath a canopy and they're gonna be covered.
Right.
Right, and it's only gonna be the crosswinds that come in and hit that, but.
Yeah.
There, there's probably less damage to the carts and everything else by just moving them off, rolling them off to the edge of the stage, forklifting down. We have to have a forklift on that, but that, we knew that anyway, so it's not that big of a problem, so.
Yep.
It was the best solution that we could ever come up with, because, yeah, we talked about a train, that's one long train, twenty-four carts, you know.
And five years from now, we may be sitting and saying, well, we should have done that, but that's not the first time we've done something in government that we changed our mind. At least we'll have enough brains to change our mind.
One, one of the issues.
And I'll be saying that about the Gilzer House.
Yeah, that is true.
We should have never sold that.
That's right, so, so. Alright, I, I need a motion to pay for these. Otherwise, we're not gonna get them, period.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, I'll second it, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Passed unanimously.
Just to prove a point.
What's that?
Just to prove a point.
You didn't vote no.
Yes.
Well, I didn't hear it.
I said no.
Not, okay, three to one it passes. Speak up. Alright, uh approve bills.
I'll move to pay the bills.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh posed, passed unanimously. Uh the only thing I have that I put under administrative update or whatever is effective beginning Wednesday, October twenty-first. The office hours for citizens at City Hall and Police Department uh will be from seven-thirty in the morning till twelve-thirty Monday through Friday. Um this is because of uh the COVID-nineteen, this is because of elections coming up, and this is because uh right now, we're, we're, we're short of staff in City Hall, so. Uh under any other situations, if they wanna come in, no different than when we closed it last time, if somebody needs to come in at three in the afternoon, all they gotta do is call and make an appointment, and we can, we can do that for them. This is of, this, this is effective Wednesday, October twenty-first, beginning this Wednesday, and it will run through November thirtieth, so for five weeks. Give or take five weeks.
But they can make an appointment if they have to come in.
That note will be on it, posted on the door, that if they, if they need something that they need to come in for, they can, they can do that, that's correct.
Cover twenty-one on November thirtieth.
Yep. Anything else, anybody? Bill?
No.
John? Chief?
No, sir.
Paul?
No.
John, little John?
No, sir.
Or big John, which one is it, I don't know. Alright.
Carla?
I've been called worse.
Carla got anything? Pardon me, Carla?
Carla, you still on, do you have anything?
I am still on, and I do not have anything.
Alright.
We're thinking of you.
Out of sight, out of mind, Carla.
Thank you.
We are adjourned at seven forty-five.